Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for coming tonight. I have a special guest, my brother from Springfield, Missouri, here this year, and he's an overdied Viking quarterback. It's good to have him here. So he's visiting. Looking to maybe buying a home here. So just visit, come back, you're home. Okay. Right now we're going to have our clerk, if he would, do our roll call.
It's the Town of Vidalia Board of Alderman Roll Call for a regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman dated June 9, 2020. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Dorey.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman McCoy.
Present.
Alderman Probst.
Present.
Mayor, let the record show a quorum of the board is present.
Okay. Thanks very much. In front of you, you have the minutes. If there's any questions on the approval, I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes from our previous meeting.
I say move to approve both as written.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dorey and a second by Alderman, was that Probst? Okay. Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll go to our CPA for item number one on our agenda, which is review of our financial statement for April of 2020. And that's Ms. Deborah Moe.
Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of April 30, 2020, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the 10 months ending April the 30th, 2020, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. In summary, the town has cash of 4.3 million, investments of 3.8 million, for a total assets of 35 million, total liabilities of 6.3 million, and fund balance combined 28.7 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the 10 months ending April the 30th indicates we have combined revenues of 29 million or 79% of the total budget, total expenditures of 27.3 million or 77% of the total budget, for a net change in net position of 1.75 million or 77% of the total budget. We should be at 83% of the total of the budget expenditure amounts, and we are actually at 77%, which is 6% below budget. At this time, it would appear that we would not exceed 5% in expenditures and transfers out for the year in the general fund or special revenue fund. However, revenues and transfers in are expected to run over budget in the general fund by $407,000 and $648,000 in the special revenue fund. Revenues in the special revenue fund are down, and so are the expenditures, which is primarily due to the decrease in production at the hydro, which generated the lower revenue and expense. In addition, the street improvements did not happen as planned. The combined change in net position is an increase of $648,000. In order to be in compliance with the Local Government Budget Act, it is the mayor's responsibility to inform the board when total revenues and expenses are failing to meet total budgeted revenue and other sources by 5% or more. In this case, the general fund and special revenue funds are expected to have revenues exceeding the budgeted amount by 5% or more. The beginning fund balances are also being adjusted to the actual amount at year end. A budget amendment is being proposed to address this increase in revenues. These changes are due to unexpected and uncontrollable events during the year. The amended budget is being presented at tonight's meeting. The adopted annual budget for 2021 is being provided to the Alderman as well. Changes which were approved by the board included the following additions: 1.2 million for the pumping station, 500,000 for street improvements, 200,000 for sewer improvements carried over from previous year, 25,000 for street department shop, 150,000 for playground. The deletions was an $8,000 more at the convention center. These changes created a net increase in revenues over expenditures of 1.1 million dollars excess. The funds to pay for the pumping station and playground are being funded by the hydro fund, pending approval by the board after meeting the requirements of hydro ordinance. The street improvements will be paid from the sales tax fund. The sewer improvements will be paid with the utility funds, while the street department shop will be funded by the general fund. All of these changes are included in the adopted annual budget. We have received partial funding from the 2019 flooding from FEMA in the amount of $27,000, and work is going on to receive additional funds. Approximately 2.7 million of the 3.7 million capital outlay budget has been expended through April of 2020. So that concludes my presentation.
Anybody have a question?
One thing that we talked about was there was two trucks, and I agreed to one truck. Now, there was not a deletion of the other truck?
You never brought that up on the...
Yeah, we did.
No, no. You brought up, before you did the one thing that you did, and you got to that, but you never did the two trucks. You asked for, you never got to the trucks. Now, you did in discussion, Alderman Probst, yes, you did say that. But when it got to where we were taking a motion to make amends to our budget, is that, that is, that's correct? Am I not correct?
No.
There was no motion made to take that off. Remember when we went through that? Because I actually, I think I made a comment. I said, you, you got the extra money put in the street.
I thought all that was in my motion that I had mentioned earlier. The whole motion was for that.
You didn't, you didn't put that in your motion. Your motion strictly addressed the $500,000.
Why did, whenever Lee said, "I got my truck," and you said, "No, you didn't." You said that at the end of the meeting.
No, I said, I said...
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did.
Well, we, we can go back and look at the tape if you want to.
You did. We said, "No, you didn't leak," and then I thought it was taken care of.
No, we, you never made the motion. We did, everybody changed what they made. They made motions, and they were addressed, and that's how, but the motion was never made for the, you know, not the extra truck. And we can go back and look at it. I mean, we can debate and talk here.
I still thought we had agreed not to buy that other truck. Okay.
But I mean, we'll, I'll be glad to sit down with you and we'll verify that.
Aye.
If it was, we'll, you know, but I don't, if anybody recalls that being made in a motion, anybody else in council will remember that being made in a motion to remove the truck.
Let's refer to the minutes.
We'll have the minutes to that.
There was no motion that we had regarding the deletion of the pickup.
That's correct.
I know that one pickup was already in the formal budget for last year. He was supposed to receive it.
That's right.
Based off of...
This was another one for this year. That's the one that you didn't want to do, but it would never make, we made, we had an agreement at the beginning that we would make motions to any add-ons or deletes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody have, I don't want to commend our departments and all on the budget for, I've looked through it extensively, and they've done a good job on managing their expenses and doing a good job, and I'd really like to thank them for doing that. So it's good work, and good work on everybody. Then what she's talking about, the hydro this year did shut down for some turbine work. They did some downhole work on some of the turbines. They were actually down, I think, probably over 30 days working on that. So some of the income wasn't there. But also, with the high river they've had for the last two years, they've generated above, you know, this cutoff where the income reduces down to, instead of getting paid $150 a megawatt, they only get paid, their town has to pay, our energy pay, only $30 a megawatt. So that did cut down, you know, the revenues that we were expecting, that had to have normal generation. That's why we're having to amend our budget. It's not a bad thing, nothing. There's no bad news while we're amending our budget. We just got to be in compliance with the Louisiana Government Budget Act to be in compliance. So it wouldn't be a finding. So, any other questions, Debber?
One statement that she made was that the 1.2 million for the pumping station and the 150 for the playground, you have designated to come out of the hydro funds. Are you still planning to hold those meetings?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Because I remember Alderman Gardner stating that he would rather it come from the main part of the budget rather than the hydro. I remember that was a heavily discussed portion of it.
Well, this, this is, after this, we're going to have over $2 million. That's a town part of those project monies. If you go, if you go into some of your other monies, that's going to go into other operating money that could be used for something else. This is what that fund is for, for these type of projects, for us to do that. And the money's sitting there for us to do it. Will be sitting there. And so, once we do that, and I think the people will jump on that, that's, this project sets up perfectly for what this is for. And I think, and still, the 1.2, it might be less. We don't know. We haven't had it engineered yet. You saw, I'm sure you saw the text today from the landowners who are wanting to meet. We've already had one meeting prior to this, and we're going to move forward with it, probably this week or next week, starting the discussions on moving forward with the project. So, but I think, yeah, we will have the two meetings that's required to, to, before you spend these funds. Anyone else?
You said there was a text from the landowners, something?
Yes. Well, from one of the landowners. We had already met with council and also Bill Murray, the Shumway part of the family, and George was there as well. He's also a representative of the family. And we talked at length, just to say that, hey, look, we're considering this, and she said that she would relay those information. So now, we will start negotiations with the family, and also looking at the plans to, to where it goes and how it's going to be handled. So, so that's where we're at. Okay? Because before they can engineer it, they got to know where it's going to go. So that's for sure. All right. Next thing we have is occupational license applications. The first one you have is Northland Hearing Centers. This is only a change of ownership. This company is located, if y'all know, it's next to the hydro building. I think it's one of the Odell buildings and one of the offices there. But this is only a change of ownership. Is there any questions? And if not, I hear a motion to accept.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dorey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The next one we have is going to be an application by Ms. Jane Nettow. Is Ms. Jane? There she is. How you doing, Jane?
Good.
Okay. Thank you for putting an office here.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
We hope you get real busy, and that you're going to be selling a lot of property and so.
We intend to reduce, move a lot of property out on the lakes, and we're hoping to sell some property and residential property here in the city of Vidalia.
Well, great.
Maybe we can help draw them out if we have good time to do something besides.
Well, we appreciate you locating here and working to do that. So...
Hey, Mayor Craft, she's also a movie star. I saw her on TV the other day.
Oh, she was?
Yeah.
That's true. HGTV.
HGTV, I saw it. Late Bruin.
Yes, sir.
You go.
I'd like to go.
Well, congratulations. That's, that's great.
That's good.
All right. Do I hear a motion? We accept?
I say move.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey, second by Alderman Betts. Was that a second or a motion?
Either one.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Jane. Thank you. Also down, we have our sign application, and she has request for your sign. You see it there. Is there any questions on her sign? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept her sign.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one we have is Reeves Drug Store. Looks like they are changing out their, their frontage sign on their building itself. This is strictly, looks like a redo of that. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept this sign.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next we have is the application for liquor and beer permit. This is coming from Ms. Brenda Floyd. Is Brenda here tonight? I didn't see her. Okay. She's opening up BB's Fish Fry at the old Fish Fry Building there where the Bud Hut was. And she is asking for a liquor license. And so, do any discussion on that? Do I hear a motion to accept?
Have the, has the fee been paid?
Pardon?
Has the fee been paid?
Yes.
Yes.
And, you know, our copy has a blank back. Was it, was it completely filled out when it was turned in to the town? Okay, good. I say move.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey to hear a second.
I second.
Second by Alderman McCoy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next thing we have, we're going to, this is strictly an introduction of an ordinance amending the operating budget revenues, expenses for the Town of Vidalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year 2019-20 that we just talked a little bit about. I don't think, there's a whole lot of discussion on this. It's an introduction, but I will entertain when they have the meeting. I honestly think this is a meeting we could have at 12 o'clock at lunch one day. It shouldn't be a very long meeting unless y'all want to have something different. And I'll entertain any questions or recommendations for a meeting. If not, y'all just want me to set a meeting?
Just set a meeting.
Set a meeting.
Yes. I don't think anybody has any preference.
Let's do it lunchtime.
Lunchtime, 12 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. It shouldn't last long. I mean, and if any of y'all have any questions on it, we'd be glad to sit down with you, discuss and show. Again, it's, it's really not anything bad or glaring out there. It's just strictly some, some things that didn't happen since we didn't spend the money, or we didn't get enough revenues because the hydro didn't operate. That's all it did. Okay. Next, number six on our agenda, property tax assessment report. And we have Ms. Jeanie Archer with the assessor's office. Ms. Archer, if you would, would you come to the microphone and speak, please?
Yes, sir. So, um, I'm here today just to give y'all a little rundown about this being a reassessment year, and kind of about y'all's millages and what they are, and what's really happened, because they've actually been adjusted this year. So, um, the parish in general had an increase in value on our property. So because our values increased, it means that our millages must decrease because we can only, um, collect the same amount of money as we did last year. So, um, the 2019 value that we had was 34,85680. It's been reassessed, and our new taxable property amount is 34,242,550. So because the property values went up, your millage now has been adjusted down. It's been approved through the legislative auditor, and it went from 3.39 to 3.37. So with that being said, you have the option to adopt your new reassessed amount at 3.37, or you have the option to roll forward. If you roll forward, you have a maximum authorized levy of 3.39. So what that all boils down to is, you can collect the same amount of money as you did last year with your 3.37 that it was adjusted to, or you can go through the roll forward process, and when you do that, if you roll up to the 3.39, it's going to boil down to $531.78 difference for this year. So, um, just, that's just to give you some ideas. Now, um, these values that you've gotten do not include the new growth that we have in the parish. This is strictly for the reappraisal process. So, um, the reassessment process, I'm sorry. And, um, we also are given information from public service each year, which is things like AT&amp;T, energy, the pipelines, things like that, that the tax commission gives us those figures. They won't be here until usually August or September. So, um, you will have new growth on top of these reappraised amounts. So it's kind of complicated process. If y'all do decide to roll forward, you've got to go through some extra steps. It's going to be some advertising, different things that you have to do. You put an ad in the paper saying you're raising the millage by rolling forward, and, you know, without further voter approval and things like that. So if y'all got any question about the reappraisal or the millage rates or any of the figures or anything, I'd be happy to try to clarify.
Any questions? I'd like to recommend we just go to the 3.37, leave the monies the same.
Absolutely. I agree.
Me too.
Let y'all fill out.
Roll call.
Well, we got, we got, we got a resolution, we got a resolution coming up to actually set that. So that's our next item, agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Jeanie, thank you so much. We appreciate you, the work you and Jerry and all have done at the office. Y'all have done a marvelous job. I know that y'all have been very helpful to us. As a resident, if you want to see how your tax dollars go, you call those people, and they can tell you percentages and money, where your money goes. So thank y'all so much for what you did.
Thank you.
Really nice. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is board discussion and vote on adopting a resolution setting millage being levied on the 2020 tax roll on all property subject to taxation by the Town of Vidalia, Louisiana. I, I think it was kind of a consensual, sounds like y'all were okay with the 3.37. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Do you need a motion on that?
Make a motion. We do that.
Yeah. I make the motion to keep it at 3.37 mil.
Okay. John, did you, did you say that first?
It don't matter.
Okay. I think he said that.
Good deal.
It don't matter.
Alderman Betts, I think, said that. He was really rather quiet.
And Alderman McCoy is second.
Well, okay. Alderman McCoy is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
When it's unanimous, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm just, George here. George, Alderman Betts, all for motion?
Yes. Okay. 3.37?
Yes. Alderman McCoy, second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number eight on our agenda is board discussion and vote on acceptance of engagement letter for Silas Simmons, LLP, to provide audit services for Town of Vidalia for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion? We accept this engagement letter?
I say move.
I think Alderman McCoy beat you. Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we have a board discussion. We've received a couple bids in on one part of...
Yes. Alderman McCoy, second. Alderman Gardner?
There was no, there was no discussion, right?
I thought, you have...
Okay. Motion made?
Alderman McCoy, second by Alderman Gardner.
You are. You have a sign, okay. Got you.
Just for anybody's information they might have, while we're, we have council teleconferencing in. Right now, the LMA and the state is allowing still teleconferencing to happen. Matter of fact, I've got two meetings tomorrow that are teleconferenced in. They're still, you know, giving people the option for open meetings. You're not violating any open meetings law if somebody wants to teleconference in and discuss and have discussion in these meetings. So, just for clarification. So, okay. Now, we're to board discussion and vote on adopting resolution awarding project for procurement of three 115 KV SF6 gas circuit breakers to electric equipment enterprises on behalf of ABB Inc., and to authorize Mayor Buzzcraft to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the project. Okay. And so, I have Jeremy and Ricky here tonight to discuss with you any questions that you might have about the substation and where we are. This was the bids that came in. That bid came in, on the breakers came in at 146,880.
This is what I was talking about in our budget discussion. When we're discussing it, is why we wouldn't have put money in the budget for, just such as this. We just approved a budget the other day, and now we're spending money right behind it.
But it's this money's, Tom, it's, Alderman Probst's already been approved. We didn't know, we didn't know, even though it's been approved, they might not request any money for this year. This could be, we don't know how long it's going to take to construct these. This is something that is really, as we do this, we will notify y'all when we make any draws against that, as we said we would do. Matt, I'll go ahead and put you, we might put a dollar against it to go ahead and open up the line. So if they do, because we want this to get started sooner than later. Because as Jeremy and Ricky can attest, we're going to talk about something on this next item with the transformers, that we feel like that we're really pushed so much that we might have to do some, some changes. And about, I'll talk about those in a minute. But let's address this one first.
But I go back to still the point of the fact that we, I still feel like it should be set in the budget and available for spending. And we said, just like this, no matter when they say it, it's in the budget. Now, we can amend it, just like we're fixing to do with the last year's budget, if it's not going to be spent. We can always go back and amend it. But it's available, ready to spend without any further ado. It's there. You know, we don't have to call a special meeting.
You want to pick a number?
Can I answer a question?
Hundred.
But the transmission on $7 million that we're borrowing is a liability. If we're going to be balance sheet items, the expense is going to be...
It's all, I don't know. Okay. Well, anyway, the $7 million is a liability, and also the expense that we put the money out or spend on it is going to be an asset. So these are balance sheet items. The only thing that's ever going to show up, and because it's in the enterprise fund, which is like any business, the interest is the only thing that's going to show up on your budget. But the interest could be capitalized as part of the construction cost in the beginning. So I talked to the Silas Simmons about it, you know, and so to make sure that it wasn't going to be in there. But we are going to let you know what the draws are every time they're made, and I'll keep a cumulative total to show exactly what the money went far and how much was spent at every meeting if it takes it, so that y'all will know how much is being expended on it. But it's not really something that's going to be part of the operating budget of the town.
Because you don't, you don't know what the dollar amounts, but you just, you don't know, for example, the next one, when we do these things, you don't know if they're going on third down, or they're going quarter down.
But the money is still available for them to get at that point, is what you're saying. The money's still available for them to get, is what she's saying. When they draw on it, you can, you can pay them.
Yeah. You've got a line of credit that's been established, been approved by you guys to go. And when you do that, we'll call...
We won't have to special meet to do that.
No, 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 not at all. It's already been approved. But all we will do is call and let you know, hey, we're making a draw to, you know, we got to spend, let's say they want 10% of this project, we'll have to send them $14,600, you know. So it just depends on what their requirements are in terms of the bid, the people who awarded what they want, you know, to start the, start the construction of these different things. So that's basically it.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Do I hear a motion that we...
Hold on, hold on just one second. There's approximately $1.5 million here. In which fiscal year will these monies be expensed? Is that in the current fiscal year or in the next fiscal year?
It's not in the budget at all.
It's not in any budget whatsoever?
No, it's like she said, this is, this is, this is a liability we approved for this project. This, you're, this is, like she said, this is going to be an asset. This is going to be a balance sheet item. It's not, again, I've, I've said several times, when you're dealing with government accounting, it's fund accounting. They track dollars and cents that are spent, whether it's operational or transfer amongst funds. But this is strictly a project that you're building. It's going to be a capital, and it's going to, it's not going to be an effect on your budget, because you've already got the money approved for it. You'll be making draws. Now, it's on us to make sure that y'all are notified when those draws are made. Okay. Any other discussion? Do I hear a motion? We accept the bid?
Make a motion. We accept the bid.
Motion made by Alderman Betts to accept the bid, or hear a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman McCoy. All in favor, say aye, or do y'all want to do roll call? I see the roll call. Alderman, I mean, Sean?
Can we just do a yea and nay?
Well, I'll just go down the row. So the motion is to accept the bid awarding the project for procurement of the three circuit breakers to electric equipment ABB. Alderman Betts.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderwoman Dorey.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner.
Yes.
Alderman McCoy.
Yay.
Alderman Probst.
What was my call?
Yes.
Present, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all. The next one is board discussion. Ken, I'll get that?
Yes.
Got you. Thanks.
Next, we have the board discussion vote on adopting resolution awarding project for procurement of two 20MVA 115 13.2 KV two winding transformers to Pennsylvania Transformer Technology Inc., and authorize Mayor Buzzcraft to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the project. Now, this is the transformers themselves. Same thing, at no event, I think somebody says usually a million dollars for a transformer, usually. So, so they did come in cheaper, so that's a good thing. So that's, you know, we might, might come out a little cheaper than what we planned on the substation itself. So any questions on this? Same thing as we, whatever their requirements are, we'll let you know as we draw. I would like, I would like to know that we, I'm making sure that we might go ahead and initiate the line of credit by adding a dollar to it to get it open. So when that does come in, we can get this on, start construction on it sooner than later. And we're going to talk about that while, after we have this vote, real quick.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey. Hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCoy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that was all the gays. I would like for Ricky and Jeremy to talk to you a little bit about, we've had a little change. Basically, after the substation project, we was going to have four transformers. We four, the existing substation has two. It's got two 15s, and this, these 20s, you can set one side by side there. Based on the load that we're seeing coming from our, our new industries and so forth, we feel like this is going to be critical to get it sooner than later. And one of the quickest things we can do, it might be a little more expensive, it might be the same, is put one of those 20s at our existing substation, because one of the things timelines, is we're having to negotiate in your, your transmission lines and also the land that you're going to go across. And they can't, they can't engineer those, all those standards, because they got to know their corner post, straight line posts, and all those things. So, and that's going to take some time. And it's their recommendation, not mine, that we go ahead and put one of those... I think, and I think that's smart, after he just... I talked at length, we talked at length with our engineers and these guys and some others about what's better out. So, if y'all have any questions, now would be a good time to do that.
I know that when we were putting them both down at the industrial park, one of the things that we talked about was the industry of the MBASF was going to be on their own circuit, so that they're not pulling from the residents. If we put this 20, which I understand the need to do so, but if we put this 20 in the existing spot, will they still maintain their own circuit? Or will that be kind of paused until we get all this worked out?
Well, that would even give us more redundancy, what you see.
Okay.
As some of y'all know, maybe during these last storms, a lot of y'all didn't see the outage on the bridge. It took us 11 hours to get the switches done. A lot of y'all didn't see that, but we did. We had one switch, a V switch at the substation in front of it. It took us a long time, almost two days to get all that back on. And because of that one V switch, we weren't able to roll it over like what you're talking about. And we had to go through BASF, we had to actually put them on the city transformer. So, in doing that, when something happens on the riverfront, something happens in the neighborhood, they see that. And it's not good for production. Anybody in production knows that it's not good for that. Also, like them, they're coming on, you know, a lot stronger. And so, and the town is growing, you know, even though we've got a lot of outage for sale for this change, but it is definitely growing. And so, we're taking into consideration of the load, the amount of load the transformers are seeing. And so, in lieu of just buying a lot of switches and trying to do everything outside, we can use that transformer on the inside of the existing substation and actually have redundancy there also if something happens like it did back in '11, when one of the transformers fell down, went down. It takes about a year to replace that. And saying so, my main concern with that is that if we take both of our eggs and put them down, we don't have only 10 acre wash that we can get back to town. And I'm not coming for that. And when we look at it with the engineers, they also look at it, they say, you put too many eggs in one basket, because you're not going to have but so much load you can bring back to the city. So, if you lose a transformer or the businesses keep growing like everybody seems that they are, we're going to get to a point where we're not going to be able to take and do what we did this past week. We put everything on one transformer, the whole city, everything the city has. Y'all didn't know that. So, we were there for one solid day, we were doing all of that switching to get it on there. We will not be able to do that. So, that's a lot of the conversation that we've been having, because that is in... I mean, it's something to look at. If, what I'm saying in that, if we would have had that same storm the other day and everybody was on it, we would have had a lot of costs, a lot of costs. It wouldn't have been just Palm Street. You know what I'm saying? That was a lot of damage there. It would have had all of your big businesses out, all you endow, everything, because we're on, was on one transformer. We tried to do it in a hot day, tried to do it early, tried to get it done, and we took one solid day to get all of that done. So, yes, ma'am. By having this other transformer at the existing substation, it will give us a lot more capability to sustain the residents more so. Not only just residents, but if we have to tie the circuits together, we'll have that capacity. We'll get all of that there.
So, the other day, if it had been a high usage day, it'd been tough. We wouldn't have made a problem.
No, sir.
If everybody had air, it was 900 degrees, we would have made...
It was 97 degrees. Yes, sir. It would have been bad. And that's one of the things that I was trying to monitor very closely. And, I mean, we were almost at our max on some of those breakers. And so, what that means is, without that capability inside the substation, it's a lot easier, kind of just like at your house, it's a lot easier to tie circuits. At the breaker panel, it is, there are wall sockets, wire stuff up, same thing. So, if we're able to do it in the substation and we have that, we have that capacity, you won't overload them circuits and say, when your neighbor's, basically the same way, if your neighbor's air conditioner come on, your lights dim, it's the same way that the substation sees them all of the time.
With doing that, are we able to put BASF on their own? Because I know when Mr. Waller was here that day, he was very passionate about how the production is slowed as a result of it.
That is my opinion.
Okay, so we're trying to do that too.
That is the same way. They said they couldn't fix the lights, they keep blinking over there because they had a power shortage, you know, they keep telling.
That is...
And they've been saying that to me for a year.
Well, that's their building, not ours.
I've been talking to VHA, Coach Oliver, in Baton Rouge, and one of the things that we've been talking about is actually to build a couple circuits, redundancy, not only for the city, but for BASF to have its own transformer and have the other transformer, for us to be able to tie the circuits together if we need to.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And also, if anything happened to the city, the 20 would be able to run all of the city and BASF if something happened to that center. And then, or the oldest since 1995.
And so, there's no plan at this time to buy a third one, so that the original plan of having two out there...
All we wanted to do was save the money.
Right.
Because I'm looking out, and let's just say, let's look at 20 years, okay? If we get more, and I know we will, we'll get more businesses out on the new industrial park.
Right.
And we can always grow that substation for more capacity, more business and everything. Let's don't shoot ourselves in the foot, though. Let's don't stop, but go ahead and do everything we need to do with the monies that is available. You know, go ahead and plan for that 20 years. Let's don't just do the one and not plan for the other, you know, or expect it. If we do, we're going to have this training meeting for...
I would like, and another thing to add on top of what Jeremy's just... This sort of residents and those there, Ms. Heather Malone's here, she'll tell you, our economic development director, she'll tell you that right now, the EDA, if they know you don't have capacity and there's companies wanting to come do business with us, they're not... If you don't have capacity to handle them, you're not going to get them.
Right.
You're taken off that shortlist of those people who want to come locate your... If you can't give them the water or the utility they need to operate and be successful. So, I know this is another thing that is really going to help us. Of course, when Jeremy first come to me and said, Mayor, we need a substation, we need it bad. And the reason why, but we also doing to, going to that one, it's going to be quicker. They think maybe 12 to 14 months instead of two years, we can have that one operational. And once we, you know...
Lead time on those transformers, the two 20s, as long as we don't do anything to change, once we put it in, anywhere from 32 to 35 minutes lead time, once we put the order in, that's today or last week.
We shouldn't have any changes, though, should we?
No, sir.
When y'all look at it completely what we actually need?
That would be enough capacity for a long time, sir.
The... I got a text that nobody could hear you, so if you don't mind, can I paraphrase what you just said and condense it way down? The city workers have come up with a phenomenal idea of putting a new transformer to help the residents, so that we don't have another power outage in a storm like we did recently. It's going to help the town.
No.
Pretty good summation.
That's not going to stop power outage.
Well, it's going to stop it to where poor old Palm Street and Azalea are out for so long.
Since our 360 and Ira had a part in that, our 360, which is, we've not had the power outages. That was a major tree damage. It was major storm damage caused that.
You overdid lines.
Right. Once it happens, it happens, you know, but the 360 has kept us in good shape. That's why your power goes out for a period of time, then it's back on in a period of time. Great.
They reroute, they able to switch and reroute the power back, back down.
Right.
But you're still, you'll still have outage. You'll have transformers blow, you're going to have tree limbs fall, you have trees fall.
Sure.
That's going to destroy services. So, but I still want to... Look, you guys did, y'all are the best. I'm not... I look, I watched them work day and night, literally for several days, and y'all are the best, no doubt.
I'm still... I'm still... Repairs with 360 years ago, which is at 18. They broke it in 18. It was out. So, when you do the 360, you can come from the other end and then Jeremy and I are talking about that tree and so forth. It's a difference.
But it makes a difference, big time. Big time.
I mean, the difference is, well, no, the customers noticed that the lights would have been out.
Right.
You know, with the loop, it absolutely makes all the difference in the world.
All right.
Can we reinstate the program where if a tree is overhanging or a tree is very close to the lines, that the city, you know, takes care of that? I know when I lived back on Lee Street several years ago, I had a tree that was growing on up into the lines, and that was a function, that was a service that the town provided to protect those lines.
Well, I can answer that to some degree. And this is with Mark and Jeremy, there are a lot of trees in Badae. You'll be in the tree business all the time, spending money on getting that done. Their thoughts, and this is at their recommendation, said, we're best to just go in and ask those things without... They do have a protocol of some problem areas that they go in, it's on a list, that they have and that they work on annually, that are budget funds, they send their budget to clean some spaces. However, they found it best, rather than go in and taking out all your problem trees, because again, you would miss a be a substantial amount of trees to take down, they actually said, it's probably best to just let them fall and us deal with the outages when they fall. Is that not correct, what y'all said, Jeremy?
To the one is, yes, sir, because it's easier to pick up, it's cheaper to pick up wire than it is to cut the trees down. Some of the trees that we've got, Coach, are, is up to $10,000.
Right.
It is a substantial amount, so to increase the customer. I mean, if we could, I'm just being honest, if we could keep getting the customers to take care of their lines, what they could be, underneath the lines, their backyard, we wouldn't be in a whole lot of trouble.
But y'all do keep, y'all do have a program in place where you go with your little lift to see y'all in your backyard with these model lift and you cut them.
If we're doing things and we gain control, and by the time we get open there, and the problems we've had for the last four years, y'all have been seeking for it. You get a $30,000 truck off the road, and you've got three little ruts as much as you want, you know, and that's something that we're running to deal with.
But the little lift has helped y'all get to a lot of places, which is amazing.
Absolutely. The only problem with it is only 42 feet.
Right.
And so, you're limited under that reach, and a lot of times you get it to there and then they go over, and that's what happens, you come down the dirt lines.
All right. Anything else? Our next, our last thing that we have on our agenda is I need board approval to enter to executive session to discuss personnel issues of the Dade Police Department, and I need to have a motion that we enter executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, rare second.
Second.
Alderman Dorey?
There was one other question before... Are we going to come back in here and discuss anything else?
We can here, but we'll, all we do is write aside the...
I wanted to bring, I wanted to ask something, I know about a bond. There was a call made this week from Travis Johnson to a certain individual, and it was dealing with a $10,000 bond. And I thought we had a...
$10 million.
Huh?
$10 million.
$10 million bond. And I thought we had a $7 million bond. And some of that, and here's the report that came off, it was for a slackwater, something about a development of slackwater port on Mississippi River, another 3.39...
We'll be glad, if Alderman want to add an agenda item and discuss that, we'll be glad to do that, but it's going to take unanimous to add that to the agenda. I mean, I mean, if you want to meet afterwards, we can get with Heather, but now, Alderman want to add that as an agenda item now, it can take a unanimous vote to add that as an agenda item for discussion, if you want to make that motion to add it to the agenda item.
We can wait till next meeting. I just want to know what's happening there, where that came from.
It's not on the next agenda.
I just want to know.
All right. Do you want to...
Unless they all agree, they want to find out now. What's y'all's thoughts?
I'll make the motion to add the agenda item.
Okay. So, you're making a motion to add an agenda item to discuss?
Whatever it is, it's for us to discuss.
Whatever this is. Whatever this is as far as the development of a slackwater port on Mississippi River planning and construction.
Okay.
A, and a ask for 9.8, 9498, 100...
I'll get with you on this, George.
Was asked for, there was a bond for $3,391.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Dorey, hear a second? Hear a second?
Second.
Take by Alderman Probst, all in favor, we're going to, let's do roll call on this.
The motions offered by Alderwoman Dorey and seconded by Alderman Probst is to add the agenda item to discuss the issue with the port project.
I...
Is that correct?
That's what, I guess it's dealing with the slackwater port.
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Betts?
Four.
Alderwoman Dorey?
Four.
Alderman Gardner?
Four.
Alderman McCoy?
I'm four.
Alderman Probst?
Four.
Mayor, let the record show, the motion passes.
Okay. I got a seat to look at, I... Can I see what you're looking at?
We're going to executive session for you.
Pardon?
You going to put this in front of the executive session?
I would think maybe our public would like to maybe hear this, so if y'all have a problem, would you go ahead and put this before the executive session?
Did we make that motion to go into the tip?
We did.
No, we didn't. I asked it for somebody to, and nobody made the motion, so I...
I thought I made the motion to go into executive session.
You did.
You want to see your motion?
And it was moved and seconded.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Alderman Dorey, second.
No, I didn't.
All right. I feel, let's go ahead and debate this, that way our people won't have to wait around and hear this if they want to. So, I'm looking at, this is basically, what did this come out of, Alderman Probst? I'm just, this looks like a, an agenda item. Was this, did this come from...
It just came off of a...
It was a legislative auditor...
It was a legislative auditor's report.
Legislature auditor's report that was, was out there.
I say Heather knew.
Heather, you know anything about it?
It, it, the funds is appropriated on the purchase of the Slackwater, that's what this is. And it was, it was moved in...
Right, so this is part of House Bill, I'm assuming, and I haven't seen the document, but it's part of House Bill 2, which is the capital outlay bill, and so, those funds that are available are in priority one, which means that it's a cash priority, the funds are there at the state level.
Hmm.
And so, the state has to include that and their bond, their capital outlay bond essentially. So it's listed, it's a bond for the state, not for the town. Does that make sense?
I guess.
Yeah, so it's part of our capital outlay money.
I just know, I just know we hadn't voted on no Slackwater Port.
No, the state is funding, the state is...
Some of it is.
The state is funding this, and this is part there, this is, this was in priority one, this is going to be moved to cash, I mean.
Right, well, it is cash, so we had, and I don't have the figures right in front of me, so I'm going to kind of be general here, but, so in last legislative session, we had, there was probably about $8 million or so in priority one, which was going towards the conveyor portion of the project that's being constructed now. And then, we had 4.25 million, I believe, in priority five, which is a non-cash line item that was moved up into priority one. So this year, as we spent funds down on the conveyor, you know, the 8 million came down, but then the addition of the 5 million, so whatever that comes to is what they'll have in their bond for this year for their capital outlay, the state.
Okay. Yeah, that was already...
Okay. I just was wondering about it, because I knew we hadn't approved Slackwater Port.
So is this another phase of the port?
Yes, so this will go towards the next, well, some of it is part of the current project, so because we haven't spent everything yet, or asked for, you know, for the funds yet to finish the conveyor, it's still in their bond.
Yeah.
But then, the 4.25, and probably a couple of extra $100,000 or so from the prior project, will be available for the next phase of the port.
The reason that I asked that question is, at the budget meeting just a few bits ago, you said we're not moving into the next phase as of yet. So if this money's being put into cash for the next phase, are you moving into the next phase yet?
So as of last week, I think they, the engineers are still doing the design on the next phase, they've put in a permit to the core, so we don't have a timeline, honestly.
And what is the town's share? What monies will not be given back or gifted back to the town?
Right, so...
Granted, I should say.
With the total port project, at this point, the town is essentially receiving 100% on construction of the port, because the town typically pays for the engineering, and that's their match. And I want to say, the town has a 20% match on any capital outlay funds, which is standard across their program. So, we are ahead because of the cost of the engineering, so whenever the state looks at our particular project, we have, I guess we've built up our share, so we've already met our match on these funds, essentially.
So at this point, is the, is the port operational now? Is it operational yet?
No, it's not, so...
Is it going to be operational before this season of harvest?
That is the plan, if the river cooperates, so the issue that we have, the river has been up for so long, there are...
There, I would like to, one of the things they've got, they've got this underwater welding for the braces on that.
They hadn't done it, I thought they'd already done it.
Well, the underwater welders have got to have a certain velocity that the river that they can get into. It's real close, but the velocities aren't there for their insurance and their things for them to do that. Yes, soon as they can, they will, but the velocity of the river is keeping them, and we've been at length here, I think it was that last week, and that was, that's the main holdup, yeah, they're ready to go, but until that velocity hits a certain amount, it's a danger to them to go down there and do that, do that.
One other question about the port, how close are we as far as getting an operator?
An operator?
Somebody that's operational, going to operate the port.
So they've prepared bids, and they have received some feedback from operators, but they have not, ultimately, you all will be accepting bids. The Port Commission will make a recommendation based on the bid process.
That's coming soon. They're hoping that this...
I knew they'd been meeting with people, I didn't know if they had, how close they were.
Plans are this fall season, there will be some product moved there.
If the river cooperates.
If the river cooperates.
As of right now.
So when it gets operational, just kind of on record on this, when it becomes operational, is this a city of Vidalia business, will we see any revenues other than the revenues that we would see from any other business? Or is this a business that is separate from the town, just happens to be called the Vidalia Port because of where it's located?
So as of right now, the asset is in the town's name, so, but from my understanding, the plan has been to, once, because the funds are in the town's name, once the funds have been expended on the asset, the town will transfer the asset to the Port Commission, which is a separate entity, however...
That is a legislative directive on the House, what can be transferred to them. They will become a taxing district where they can actually have taxed and levy taxed to operate the port.
But then, this board sets the members on the Port Commission, so it's very commingled, but it is a separate political subdivision of the state.
Okay.
All right, that it?
That is.
Okay. And you're welcome to stay, I don't know how long we've been executive session, but when we come out, all we will do is either ratify or not the decisions we make back there, so anyway, thanks for coming, you can stay, but anyway, thank y'all for coming. I hear a motion, we go into executive session.
Well, we had that motion.
I have one. I have McCoy, seconded by Alderman Dore.
Alderman Betts, that we exit executive session, there are second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Alderman McCoy. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the first item of order here is for us to ratify the police chief's disciplinary actions in case A that we discussed tonight, and do I hear a motion that we accept this disciplinary action?
I make the motion.
Motion may by Alderman Probst, there are second, all seconded by Alderman Betts, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay.
I abstain.
Okay, hang on just a second, I need to, who, who made the motion, Alderman Probst?
Uh, we, this is to accept, we had two issues tonight, the police chief had two disciplinary issues. The first one that we discussed, it was, it was four to five, yea, the dissenting vote was Alderman Gardner, was a no.
There was an abstention, though.
And then...
Alderman Dore abstained.
Oh, and Alderman Dore abstained, so there was still a majority vote.
3-1-1.
3-1-1, and Alderman Betts made the motion, Alderman McCoy seconded it, or, no, Alderman Probst made the motion, and Alderman Betts seconded, I'm sorry.
And, uh...
Yes.
Can I, can I get?
Now, we got to the second issue.
Can I get, can I just get a roll call?
Yeah, that's what you got to do.
I'm going to get a roll call, if I can, Mayor.
Well, we're going to roll call.
George, I'm going to get a roll call. So the motion made by Alderman Probst, seconded by Alderman Betts, was to accept, on case A, to accept the chief's recommendation for three-day suspension. Alderman Betts.
For.
Alderman Dore.
Abstain.
Alderman Gardner. Alderman McCoy.
I'm against it.
Alderman Probst.
For.
So that's a different vote we got the first time around, is that correct?
That motion fails. It's two yays, two nays, and an abstention.
Would there be a tiebreaker, two and two?
No.
On, on something like this, I do not know if the mayor can break a tie on this.
Counsel, there, we've had a, we've had, I don't think, Jay, I don't think you can, remember, if you have somebody that's there to abstain, to force a vote from the mayor, you can't do that, remember that?
That's right, and it's not...
There wasn't an abstain to force for the mayor.
Well, see, what happens is you can't, you can't abstain, if there's somebody abstaining, you can't, that can't force a mayor to have to make that decision.
That's right, the mayor can't.
And that's, that's, that's...
That's right.
We, we...
That's right.
So therefore, so that motion...
So that motion to accept that recommendation has failed for lack of majority.
Right, so now we got to do what we did on...
So you have another motion to recommend another...
Now, can I hear a motion to accept the recommendation of the police chief on case B that was discussed tonight? And, and it will be up and down vote, we'll do that by, anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, there are second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Probst, let's do a roll call vote again.
So this is the motion made by Alderman Betts, seconded by Alderman Probst, is to accept the chief's recommendation on case B for reprimand. Alderman Betts. Alderman Dore. Alderman Gardner.
Against.
Alderman McCoy.
Against.
Alderman Probst.
For.
Mayor, there is yays are two, the nays are three, that motion fails to accept the recommendation.
So now we...
So now we will deliberate this matter at a, at a future date, meeting, that we will discuss more at length. I think there's maybe some more research that we can do, and related to all these, and these issues, I think there's some questions that we can answer. Again, I want to say that I support all of our workers, all of our city, all of our departments, and we just want to make sure that we're all doing our best that we can for our town.
So my question is, do we not make our recommendation now on case A or B?
I, I don't think we, now, if y'all want to make a recommendation and vote on it, I will certainly hear that, if y'all want to do that tonight, on what you're, but somebody's going to have to make a recommendation of the level of disciplinary action that you're going to do, is there somebody wanting to do that tonight on case A?
I'd like to table that until a different day.
I'd say table and get more information if...
Okay, that's on case A, what about case B?
So I'd like to table it.
Table both of them.
It sounds like y'all are in agreement for that?
I'm not, but majority is, so...
Same vote, I mean, we table it or not table it?
We can take each case, and if y'all want to table it, or if you want to go forward. Okay, on case A, Alderman McCoy, do you want to make a motion to table the...
I still move that we table this until further investigation.
On case, are we talking about case A?
Yeah, second, as a seconded by Alderman Probst, you want to do a roll call?
Okay, so the motion to table case A, made by Alderman McCoy, seconded by Alderman Probst, Alderman Betts.
For.
Alderman Dore.
For.
Alderman Gardner.